Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first meeting of January 2023. If anyone needs any hearing devices, please raise your hand and we'll get you some. Would you like a hearing device? Yes?
You have one or do you need one?
Oh, no, I think I can hear if I can't, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Let's do the.
Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
No.
No, all right. The council have any board reports to share? Nope. I'd like to make an announcement that the council conducted a performance review over city manager in early December. We found that our manager achieved his goals set for him in 2022, and the council has approved a 2.5% raise for 2023. And also a bonus accordance to his terms of his contract. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Has everyone reviewed the items on the consent agenda? We have a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, do we have anyone interested in public comment tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first person is Athena Ayers.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I hope you all had a wonderful holiday. I won't take up too much of your time. I appreciate being here. I just wanted to publicly demonstrate my gratitude for each of you and the support that Community Lifeline received in an effort to increase our capacity. We have been able to do that. We have been at full capacity. We're very close to since that support came through, so I just wanted to share that with you. And just thank you. Each of you contribute immensely to your community and probably don't hear it often enough that we need you guys and you guys do amazing work and I value the ability to work with all of you and contribute to our community as well. So, thank you.
Next, we have Dean Jewitt.
Happy New Year. I just want to have a conversation on a few things that I've noticed as of late, kind of my my status report for you. If you haven't already seen it, walking and driving through town. I noticed quite a few tents popping up in landscaping areas. Apparently, there was an individual that wasn't real happy about what I posted on Facebook. About a tent being at Key Bank, had to go into Key Bank and have a conversation with them about the tent that was in their landscaping, been there for multiple days. We have chain link that's had to be put up by the Bank of America building because there was damage that was caused to that building. We've got Safeway having to take down landscaping so that we can keep people out from behind there causing issues. People are having to put up security systems and cameras, lock up their dumpsters. These are all that it costs to a business that's already Washington State is one of the hardest places to do business in with the taxes and the the atmosphere that we have to deal with. And now we have to deal with on on top of that, and obviously that's caused from lack of enforcement. We have unsafe vehicles that have been reported numerous times overloaded, highly highly unloaded and overloaded, completely unsafe. I have no idea what liability is going to be on the city if something happens to that because I guarantee you that if there's somebody that needs some information, they'll get that information from me and or even a Public Request Act of all the pictures that I've turned in to the app. We've got unlicensed RVs that are that are are known to hang out in parking lots for umpteen time. Now, can the city go into a private parking lot? Nobody's going to answer me, but no. So what do you do? The city then contacts the owner of that property and has a conversation in that direction. We've got an RV that's been sitting on First Street for over a month. We've got another one that's sitting up in the Walmart parking lot right now that's very unsafe. I, we've got graffiti that I had to call in. We had to have some officers come down and handle that, but here's some codes that I want you guys to take a look at. 8.08.030 deals with the graffiti. We got garbage 8.08.40. But don't worry, I'll email these for you as well. We've got a an ordinance on public defecation. You should take a look at that one. 9.2.0.020. So there's quite a few here. I don't have time to get into each and every one of them, but I'll send an email so that you guys can take a look at it. Very easy to find, very easy to read, very direct on what it says. So I scratched my head and I just wonder what are we doing? So we just got to pick and choose based off of whether on what we enforce and what we don't enforce? Thank you.
Next is Jackie Jewitt.
Good evening. So I'm going to do what I do best, and I like to relate things to my school. You know, experience. So within a school district, that's a community. Within that school district, there's a lot of communities, right? So you have different schools and so on. In my classroom, I have a classroom community. And that classroom community consists of 22 adorable second graders right now. So one year ago today, I started a new job at a new school. I signed a contract. I was hired to do that job. I paid money to do that job, and I love that job, actually. So I'm good at it. So there are things that I need to do. One of the most important things, one of the most important jobs that I have as a teacher is to make sure that my kids feel safe in a safe learning environment. That is my number one thing. So with that being said, if I had one or two, one or two of those little second graders that were just creating havoc, they were just being mean to other kids, they were bullying, maybe they were yelling across the room, maybe they're throwing things, maybe they're running, whatever they're doing, but they're creating havoc. So then I have several of those students come up to me and say, Mrs. Jewitt, so and so. Okay, okay, you know, my reaction is like, okay, you know, thank you for letting me know. So I don't really do anything at that point with these two kids. So then, next thing you know, I'm starting to get phone calls from parents. And parents are like, you know, my child said, you know, and blah, 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 blah. Well, you know what? Again, I decide maybe the problem's not big enough for me to take care of. So eventually that problem grows. And now I have several students that are just creating havoc, creating this unsafe environment. So I don't have to tell the kids, listen, I don't care about your concerns or issues. I just don't care. My actions speak to that. My community members are talking to me, and I'm not reacting to that. So next thing you know, I just got all this chaos and havoc, and it's not going to get any better. And then it's going to be more difficult to pull it into control because then I've got my administrators, my counselors, my superintendent. They're all trying to, what is going on in Jewett's class? It is unsafe. I feel unsafe coming into Shelton's community. I have several parents out there in Matlock that feel unsafe coming into Shelton downtown. Community members are speaking now, and we want some action because now it's blown up and it's getting worse and worse and worse. Thank you.
And we have one on Zoom, and that is Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director of Quixote Communities. In an article in December 2022, The Atlantic discussed the obvious answers to homelessness as the data and research around it have shown that homelessness is a housing problem. If poverty was the main driver of homelessness, then places with higher poverty rates would also have higher homelessness rates. Data has shown that urban areas with very high rates of poverty have the lowest rates of homelessness and places with relatively low poverty rates have relatively high rates of homelessness. If mental health or drug abuse were the main drivers of homelessness, then places with higher rates of these problems would see higher rates of homelessness. Research proves that this is not true. In fact, in places with the highest rates of mental illness, they do not have a high rate of homelessness because they have affordable housing options. If warmer weather were the main driver of homelessness, then all warm weather places would have higher rates of homelessness than colder climates. Once again, research proves this is not true. Colder climates have the same numbers of homelessness as warmer climates do. If welfare recipients were the driving force of homelessness, then we would see less homelessness in areas with lower welfare recipients. The opposite has been found to be true. Research data shows that there is no relationship between two. In fact, social welfare programs reduce homelessness. Research shows the homeless crisis cannot be explained by disproportionate levels of drug use, mental illness, or poverty. Rather, the most relevant factor in homelessness crisis are rent prices and vacancy rates. Homelessness is abundant only in areas with robust labor markets and low rates of unemployment. Why? The infrastructure that seeks to attract quality workers without providing adequate housing to meet the needs of these workers will create rising house prices and rents and therefore create skyrocketing homelessness. Opposition to development in the form of height limits, density restrictions, design review boards, mandatory community input, and other veto points have resulted in the United States being millions of homes short of what the population needs. The worst harm falls on people who find themselves without housing. Nextdoor posts, tweets, Facebook, and other social media outlets are filled with comments about how the homeless are responsible for community disorder, lack of public safety, and reduced quality of life. The solution is not more police stricter laws or more jails. If you're looking for solution to homelessness, you should be pressing your elected officials to build more affordable housing. If not, the problem will continue to grow along with your frustrations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has not signed up to speak or like to speak? Okay.
Mr. Jewitt.
Would you?
You were on the committee. We had a.
Mary, please state state your name and and address as.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Mary Eagleson here. We had a committee and we worked on homelessness and we were trying to find solutions, but as the young lady just stated on Zoom. I hear people get up here. I hear people in town. I see it. People who have never been homeless have no idea, first of all, what it's like. So you know, you have to have a little bit of sympathy because you just can't go out and get an apartment. If you can't get a job, if you don't have an address, you don't have a car, you're not going to get jobs. That we're not the only community. You make it sound like Shelton is such a bad place. And you drive around and Olympia, Tacoma, Seattle, Los Angeles, San Diego, every place is going through the same thing, and it isn't a city problem. It's a government problem. The government made this happen. We have so many people. There's no place for them. Rents go higher. People can't get jobs. You're going to have people on the street until the government comes in and says we're going to make some changes so that people can get into places. But it's not just a city thing. It can't blame the city. You can't blame city council for not doing enough. You have to write to the to the people that that make the big decisions. It isn't just us. Shelton isn't a bad place to live. Yeah, there's homeless people. There's homeless people everywhere you go. So don't make Shelton sound so bad. And and if you keep telling people that it's a bad place, they're going to believe you. They're going to think it's a bad place. But it's not, and we just have to find solutions instead of finding all the problems. That's how I feel about it. That's it.
Anyone else like to speak that has not spoke? All right, moving on to our business agenda. Finance Director Mike Dins has information for us about updating the master fee schedule.
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Members of Council. We're bringing to you for your first view tonight, the 2023 Master Fee Schedule. Just a couple of things to point out. I included the submissions by department directors with underlying new parts and then line through changes where fees are changing. As a reminder, some of the rates are part of Shelton Municipal Code, so for water sewer, those are set via that. But this document brings everything else into one schedule. It would go into effect February 1st. Should you act on it at your next business meeting? We did also include or made sure to include over the sections where the technology fee and credit card processing fee would be applicable so that that's very clear in this year's document. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have a motion?
I move that we forward Resolution Number 1253-1122 to the Action Agenda of the January 17th Council for Council Meeting for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions for Mike? No? We have a motion, the second to forward Resolution 1253-1122 to the Action Agenda, January 17th Council Meeting for Further Consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Now, City Engineer Ken Gill has information for us for us about the local road safety project.
Happy New Year, Council. It's good to see your smiling faces. So back in September, Shelton was awarded about $1.3 million as a result of your local road safety plan action. So this is the first step in tonight into making those projects a reality. There's an air photo kind of schematic in your packet of the three projects. Max was nice enough to put the one up there on at Third Street and Riverwood Avenue. So the first step in this process is to sign a local project administration agreement with WashDOT. And those are the 14 items that Shelton has to jump through to make these funds real and construct these projects. You have signed a similar document for your state-funded Safe Route School Project and your federally funded Brockdale Surfacing Project. That's all I prepared. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I recommend you move this on to your next agenda on the 17th.
Right, Donna, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Move to put Resolution Number 1254-1222, local road safety project to the Action Agenda on January 17th.
All right, comments or questions? Question? Yes.
I think I caught, but these are all 2023 projects? Or do these projects extend as 23? They will. As part of your packet is the award letter from WashDOT and construction starts completed until June 2025.
Any more comments or questions? Thank you, Ken. We have a motion and a second to place Resolution Number 1254-1222 on the Action Agenda for January 17th Council Meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ken is up again. Our next item is project award for resurfacing improvements on Brockdale Road. Ken has details.
So Shelton was blessed. We received some federal funding from Mason County and some of $278,000, and it's to resurface Brockdale Road from its intersection with the Johns Prairie and Batstone Cut Off. So six bids were received. The lows were saved from around 246,000 to 546. So your public bid process was really at work. Thank you for Donna for helping me open bids. This is a federally funded project, and we had to get approval from WashDOT to award it. They, John Ho, the local project engineer, has given us that permission to award it. This project was in your budget, but inflation has increased the price of asphalt. So to pay for the the construction management and a 10% contingency, I proposed to use some of the funding that staff had proposed for Olympic Highway North in 2023. So a little bit of background on that. We staff applied for a grant from TIB to rebuild Olympic Highway North from C Street all the way out to Walla Steel to Walmart. We didn't get it this year, and the feedback that we got from TIB was spend your Riverwood Avenue money and apply again in 2023. So those funds won't be used. I propose to use about half of them to pay for Brockdale. Even with using those funds, the funding for Brockdale is 13 and a half percent match. Note that your funding, your your big amount was below your funding, your grant amount. So we still have got a little bit of cushion in there for the construction management and contingency. This is the best way, in my opinion, to leverage your TBD funds in your city funds, because if you do the math, the last table, the back of a napkin, you're you're getting it, you're putting in about half of the cost that it takes to complete the entire project. I don't have any other comments on this, but I recommend you award this at your July, your January 17th Council Meeting.
You just wish it was July.
We'll be paving in July. I'm thinking about paving projects, so.
Donna, anyone sent a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
I mean, base resolution number 1255-1223 on the Action Agenda of January 17th Council.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
When are we planning to pay? The earliest I can do it is in March when the pavement. Yeah, so I'm hoping if we get some great weather in in March or April with this in place, we can have a contractor under contract and do that work.
Any more comments, questions? We have a motion and a second to place Resolution Number 1255-1222 on the Action Agenda. Did I skip one?
No, that's right.
1222 on the Action Agenda for January 17th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, it's Ken again.
Okay, in front of you again is another item associated with Brockdale. I mentioned the federal funding that comes strings. We've got to do some wage rate interviews, make sure that asphalt, it's all the specs. And it requires that we hire the design consultant to do that for us. So RH2 did the design. They've got it approved, got us all the way through bidding, and they're also going to get us all the way through construction. Whenever you have a federally funded project, at the end, you have an audit. You want to make sure that you have air fall reduction. So this does that for us, and as part of the project, again, money will be done by a supplement like I described to you guys before, and that's all I have to present.
All right, any public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Right, you have a motion.
I move to place Resolution Number 1256-1222 on the Action Agenda for the January 17th Council.
Second. All right, comments or questions?
Can I just want to say thanks for putting us all together and making our money work harder, putting everything in the right place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion, the second to place Resolution Number 1256-1222 on the Action Agenda for January 17th Council Meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You, all right. Ken's off and Chief Pison is on. Chief Pison has information for us about the Mason County Jail Service Contract.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Members of Council. As promised, now that we have the Nisqually Jail contract completed, I'm here to talk to you about changing our contract with the Mason County Sheriff's Office. As you know, currently, we pay for seven guaranteed beds at their facility that are sometimes challenging for us to use based on their booking restrictions and the requirement that five of those beds be limited to people that only have city charges that they're facing at that time. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been meeting with the Sheriff's Department. Instead of having those seven guaranteed beds as we have been paying for that we can't necessarily always use, we are negotiating for a per diem contract that's going to be very similar to the one that we have with Nisqually. The similarities include we'll pay 130 per person, but we only pay for people that are in custody. Part of this contract also covers that anything that is a mandatory arrest can still be booked into Mason County Jail. We'll just pay the the rate for those if it's city charges. Anything that meets their booking restrictions, which would be felony arrests currently just A and B felonies, and they're starting to add some C felonies to that as well. But those felony charges, we would not pay for those. Those would be paid for by the county because it would go to their district court. So our hope is that this can get moved on to the Action Agenda so that we can get a new contract signed and stop paying for the seven guaranteed beds and just pay for the people that we actually book into jail.
All right, any public comment, Donna?
No, we don't.
And do we have a motion?
I move to forward the Mason County Jail contract to the Council Meeting on January 17th for further consideration. Second.
Comments or questions?
You mentioned C. What is that?
So A and B felonies are going to be your your very serious violent crimes against people. A lot of your C felonies are going to be lesser assaults, burglaries, anything that's a large amount that's a property crime would be your C felonies. So up until recently, they were only taking A and B felonies at Mason County Jail. They've opened that up a little bit since probably November-ish. But a lot of the booking restrictions are still in place.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions?
Are we capped at seven or can we go above seven?
If we're doing a per diem contract, as long as they have space available, we should be able to book anyone in as long as they meet those booking restrictions. The only thing that they're promising is that if it's a mandatory arrest, so that would be anything that's a DUI, domestic violence, or of course, A and B felonies, they're going to take those at however many that we have in there.
We have more flexibility.
Yes.
And then if we don't, they don't take them, we have our wonderful Nisqually contract.
Yes, we do.
Right.
I had two things about Nisqually. Do we have a cap with this quality?
No, sir.
And then what are the challenges of getting people to Nisqually?
Right now, our biggest challenge happens to be staffing. Our minimum staffing on both watches is two people. A trip out to Nisqually is going to take about 45 minutes each way. So the only way we'll we'll be able to make those discretionary arrests out to Nisqually is if we're fully staffed, which means there are three people. So one person can do that, but we're looking at some contingencies because right now we're down two people. I have two that are out on injury. Another is about to go out for surgery. So we're looking at potentially having a list of people on overtime that would be willing to come in simply to do those transports as needed so that we can hold more of the folks accountable moving forward. So that's our short term plan is to have to do that.
And would that be considered like duty possibly?
No, it has to be a full duty person because there's a possibility that someone that's in custody could be a danger to the officers while they're driving.
Okay. So Ellen and I gets like duty benefits, so.
Yeah, now for that one.
So, yes.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Um, I forgot what I was going to ask you. Oh, do we? We have some reserve police officers, don't we, that were?
We have one at the moment. That some of the new laws that went into effect make it really difficult to have reserve police officers because the standards were changed with the new laws last year. So getting new ones would require academies, and right now, none of the agencies close by having one. So if I find one that is having one, we'd probably put out applications and see if we could get some more reserves. But right now, we just have one.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just overall, we were paying a flat rate to Mason County for beds that we often could not use. With the Nisqually contract and with this new per diem contract, we still won't be able to hold many people in Mason County Jail accountable for less than a B felony, which is, as Chief Pison mentioned, the crimes against people. So there's just not space available there. But with Nisqually, we do have that space available even for lesser C felonies or misdemeanors for that matter.
But with Nisqually, we do have that space available even for lesser C felonies or misdemeanors for that matter. Now it's just a matter of figuring out how often we can transport. Added goss, of course, but we think it's important and council thought it was important enough when we. Passed the two thousand and twenty-three budget with the use of general fund reserves to do that. So we will find a way to make that work.
Have we used Nisqually yet?
Yes, I, I was hoping I'd get a chance to tell you. So we got off to a little bit of a slow start because there were some questions as far as how the court was going to work and. Last week we had someone that was causing a disturbance up at the Fred Meyer. It was a person that's very well known to my folks. He vandalized a car. He ran from the officers when they got there. They ultimately ended up getting him into custody. He had two municipal court warrants for his arrest and four district court warrants for his arrest, but none of them. Met the booking restrictions at Mason County Jail. As they were taking that person into custody, dispatch got on the air and told us that Mason County Jail was not going to hold this person. And the sergeant on scene said, that's okay, we're going to take him out to Nisqually. And that person yelled and screamed the whole time saying, wait, I never get arrested. You can't take me to jail. But he did in fact go to jail and he went to Nisqually and everything went fine the next day doing the arraignment on the Zoom video court.
Sounds like we're well on our way of holding people accountable, criminals accountable.
Yes, we are. I think it's going to be very optimistic for us moving forward.
Been a long time in the making. All right. Any other comments or questions, Chief? All right.
Thank you.
We have a motion in the second to forward the Mason County D L contract to the council meeting on January seventeenth for the consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Public Works Director Jay Harris, information for us about some property acquisitions.
Good evening, Council. Happy two thousand and twenty-three. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So wastewater property treatment in two thousand and nineteen, Grant Osborne started working on the update to the two thousand and thirteen sewer comprehensive plan. That plan, the update is includes a nine point two million dollars sewer lift station. And a pipe that takes the northwest part of the city. And takes that wastewater and pumps it up to the membrane treatment plant at Sanderson Field. And so to, to capture that wastewater, there's very specific sites closer. You can't, it has to be up on the hill a little bit, but as far as we can this way. To send the water and we call it the North diversion station to the plant, the membrane plant up there. We found that the Devon property is probably the best situated to build this future lift station and pressure line to the plant. And so you also have to upgrade the plant though to which we're working on. We're working on some state funding and that sort of thing. To upsize the plants. Obviously, if you send more water, you gotta upsize the plant also. The thing about sending more water up there, less goes into Oakland Bay through our existing conventional wastewater plant. We're able to send more water into the Goldsboro Creek Aquifer. And then we're also able to have storage, propose a half million gallon tank up there. So we can reclaim and keep reusing the water. So rather than the current model where we're pumping out of the wells, the user takes it and uses it, goes down to the main plant, goes out to the bay. We want to capture a large part of that water and keep running it through the reuse process. Whatever doesn't get reused goes back into the ground, recharges Goldborough Creek. And helps the fish during the summer, especially the low flows. The property purchase, there's a cell tower on two parcels of that site. There's a ninety-nine year lease. Through a cell provider for an easement on those parcels. The lease payments were prepaid, so the city isn't going to get any revenue from that, but that comes along with the, the property purchase. We hired GPA valuation to do an appraisal in the fall of twenty-one. They appraised it at four hundred and five thousand dollars. I met with council last spring, went over a lot of this with you in February. The purchase price is still at four hundred and five thousand. We have a signed purchase and sale agreement for the properties. And we've allocated four hundred and ten thousand dollars of wastewater funds. In last summer supplemental budget, we moved some money around and got that money in place. Staff recommends moving forward with property purchase.
Done. Anyone sign up for the comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have a motion?
I moved to place resolution number one, two, five, nine dash one, two, two on the general action agenda.
All right. Comments or questions?
Question for you. What's the plan once we take ownership of the property for, I'm assuming it's going to be a little while before we can do the capital improvement. For the sushi plan, but controlling and maintaining that site. What, how does that going to work?
Yeah, currently the site has a cell tower site and a small building. It's likely we'll probably remove the small building because it's not much use for us in the future and it's, it's located right where the future lift station would be. Probably clean the site up and just keep it regular mode more than it's getting right now.
Appreciate it. That was, that was the question where I was going with it. So thank you.
Any more comments or questions? We have a motion in the second to, to place resolution number one, two, five, nine dash one, two, two, two on the action agenda for January seventeen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Ken's backed up again. Ken has information for us about a grant acceptance for well one rehab.
Good evening, Council. Good to see you again. I presented this project to you way back last year and haven't changed it much. This project replaces a gravity water line that goes from Shun Springs down to the high school tank. So and is in a crucial investment in your water system. So it's funded by the. State coronavirus fiscal recovery funds through the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. And a big thank you to Mary who put this plan into action, the application by your go. So I haven't changed anything from what I presented to you last year, but I recommend that you prove it so that we can use these funds to construct that project.
All right. Any public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Maybe we have a reading of resolution number one, two, five, zero dash one, two, two, two. I'm sorry, one, two, four, nine dash one, two, two, two.
Okay. One, one.
One, one, two, two, excuse me.
Can you, can you read that again, Mr. Mayor, just for clarity?
We have a motion in the second to approve resolution number one, two, four, nine dash one, one, two, two as presented.
Are you ready for a reading, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number one, two, four, nine dash one, one, two, two. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting a direct appropriation grant for the well one rehabilitation project. And authorizing the city manager to sign the capital agreement with the Department of Commerce.
Right. Now do we have a motion?
Move to proof resolution number one, two, four, nine dash one, one, two, two as presented.
Second. All right. Comments or questions?
I have a, I can't remember the amount of that.
The grant amount is two million dollars.
Okay.
We have a motion in the second to approve resolution number one, two, four, nine dash one, one, two, two as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ken has more information for us about the well one rehab.
Same project. This is the design engineer to finish the, up to the design and get us out to bid. So they've been working on this oh, since before I started in two thousand and eight. So thank you, Max, for putting that up there, but it's basically making that blue line on that map a pressurized water main. So. This is grant, this amount is for an additional seventy-seven thousand dollars and, and it's paid for entirely by the grant. So I don't have any other questions or comments and I've changed anything since I presented to you last year.
Any public comment, Donna?
No.
Maybe a reading of resolution number one, two, five, zero dash one, one, two, two.
Resolution number one, two, five, zero dash one, two, two, two. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve contract amendment number three. To the professional service agreement with Gray and Osborne Incorporated titled well one, well one rehab project design services.
Did you say one, one, two, two, one, two, five, zero dash one, two, two, two? Mine doesn't say that.
It doesn't. Resolution, the briefing sheet is off.
Okay. All right. So what is it?
Resolution number one, two, five, zero dash one, two, two.
Okay.
All right.
It's like we're programmers. We're dealing with ones and zeros.
Mine actually is wrong. It wasn't, wasn't me this time. All right. So we get a motion.
Move to the resolution number one, two, five, zero dash one, two, two, two as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions? We have a motion in the second to approve resolution number one, two, five, zero dash one, two, two, two. As presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ken has information for us about a DOC grant.
Same pot of funding, same grant amount, different project. So it's to turn that green dot in there into a half a million gallon reclaimed tank. And. This again submitted by Mary Ricker. This is again coronavirus funding. This allows Jeff to sign that agreement and make that money real. So as I'm standing up here, I'm grateful for Richard Harris. And one of the reasons why I'm grateful is that I'm not the only engineer in Shelton presenting you sewer projects anymore. So anyway, I recommend that you move this one forward and we go out and construct that tank and provide some reserve for our other. Our users.
All right. Any public comment, Donna?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
We have a reading of resolution number one, two, five, one dash one, one, two, two.
Resolution number one, two, five, one dash one, one, two, two. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting a direct appropriation grant. For the satellite wastewater treatment plant reclaim tank project. And authorizing the city manager to sign the capital agreement with the Department of Commerce.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I moved to proof resolution number one, two, five, one dash one, two, two, two as presented.
All right. Comments or questions?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Who was the second on that?
I'll take the second, Donna.
Thank you.
Comment. This is another ARCO project. So, thank you, ARCO.
Correct.
That's all.
All right. We have a motion in the second to approve resolution number one, two, five, one dash one, one, two, two as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last action item is contract amendment for the reclaimed tank design. Ken has details.
This is also should, should associated with the reclaimed tank. This is a contract for Grant Osborne to finish the design and get us out to bid so we can go construct it. A big thank you to the Squawson tribe for providing some seed money to get that started, process started before we got our grant. So this amendment is for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars paid for by the grant. I recommend that you approve it so we can get that process started.
Thank you. Any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we have a reading of resolution number one, two, five, two dash one, one, two, two.
Resolution number one, two, five, two dash one, one, two, two. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve contract amendment number two. To the professional services agreement with Gray and Osborne Incorporated for the design of the satellite wastewater treatment plant reclaim tank.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve resolution number one, two, five, two dash one, one, two, two as presented.
Comments or questions?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Another ARCO project.
Correct.
So thanks somebody again. The state and the government for providing us this opportunity to bring the money locally. And you, of course, for doing all the details and all the hard work. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in the second to approve resolution number one, two, five, two dash one, one, two, two as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. We're at Jeff. Will you give us a city manager report?
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. A couple of things I wanted to mention. First, the, I, I have it written down as snow response, but it wasn't really that. It was ice response over the holiday. Our crews did a fantastic job dealing with that weather, that storm event. It was about the worst ice I've seen in many years. And they did, they did a great job. I heard nothing but compliments from the community and that's great to hear and I'm very appreciative of the work that they did. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week or. Seven days a week, but they, for during that storm, that was, that was quite an effort and I, I really appreciate it and I'm sure the council does as well. Next thing I wanted to mention was the council assignments for two thousand and twenty-three. We are in our first meeting of Jan, of two thousand and twenty-three. So I sent this out to council, asked if there were any changes that any council members would like to see and there weren't. So we will keep the council assignments the same in two thousand and twenty-three as they were in two thousand and twenty-two. I'll send this out again just so you all have the contact information for your committee assignments, see on the times and dates when those groups meet. Let's see here, financial sustainability task force. So we've talked about this. We solicited requests for people that were interested in volunteering for the community and taking a look at. Our financial sustainability for two thousand and twenty-four and going forward. We've got a very good response. I was very happy to see it. Director Mike Givens and I, finance director are going to sit down tomorrow and finalize that group. And we'll make that announcement probably Thursday, but maybe Friday morning depending on how things go, but we'll make that announcement at that time. And then get that group started. This morning, we had a exit conference with the state auditor's office and going over both financial and accountability audits for the years two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Very happy to report that we had exceptional audits for both our finances and. Our accountability, following policies, following state law, that type of thing. It is a draft report at the moment, but it should be finalized early next week if anybody's interested in taking a look at that. And we'll share that link as soon as that report's finalized, but S A O, the state auditor's office doesn't expect any changes to that report. Very happy to see a outside unbiased opinion of the work that we're doing and how we're doing it right. So that's, that was great to hear today.
And since the, the audit was so easy for the state or costs were even lower for this audit.
Yes. Big thanks go to our finance department, especially Director Givens and Terry Snitzer, who did an amazing amount of work to get that done. A two-year audit is a sign that the state trusts how we're handling things, but it does not make it easy on our team here to gather all that information. State auditor's office was very complimentary of Terry. In the work that she did, providing information to them and I appreciate it and I'm sure everybody does and. She's earned a little bit of a vacation to get that stuff done. So very, very pleased with that. On your looking ahead, next Tuesday, your study session will be on the council protocol manual. We do have, I have had a couple of suggestions from various council members about what to change. So I'll bring that, those suggestions to. Council and we can discuss those and we'll also talk about any others that might come up at the time. Any changes to the overall manual, what you'd like to see or not see, but we'll have a discussion about that and get those that implemented. At your next regular business meeting on the seventeenth, another full agenda. This was a very full one for the first weekend in January, first Tuesday in January. But the seventeenth looks like at this point it's shaping up to be just as full. You'll hear all of the same things you did tonight, along with hopefully, fingers crossed, a contract for. The designated crisis responder with Olympic Health and Recovery Services that we received funding for through. The Association of Washington Cities as part of their alternative response team grant. So. Very, very happy to be bringing that to you and getting that project implemented. That was part of the homeless task force recommendations and we're getting that going fairly quickly. So that's about it. The only other thing I wanted to mention is on the twenty-fourth, we'll be talking about at your study session, we'll be talking about. Fleet management, how we're going to do that, whether we go with an outside vendor or you all saw the presentation last year from the F C S group about. The initial startup costs for our own E R P program. Or I'm sorry, E R and R program. Kind of shocking. So we're looking at other ways to do it to get the most bang for our buck, but maintain our fleet in a way that particularly our. Police fleet, fleet in a way that addresses public safety and make sure our officers have the best equipment. And that's all I have. I am happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Uh, I just want to thank you for, uh, hiring all-star staffing to get us through. All of our challenges we've had the last several years, I believe this is the third audit in a row with, with no findings.
Yep.
Um, and that's pretty good, pretty darn good. Um. And, uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff, I wanted to commend you and your staff. And I want to commend you for your leadership and motivating our staff, getting, keeping us almost at capacity with hiring. And in a really difficult time.
Yeah.
And making Shelton a great place to work and a great place to live. So thank you very much, I appreciate it, I think you deserve every single two point percent of, of what we improve, so, um. Then, I just want to appreciate, appreciate you during this holiday season, I know it's over, but, um, you deserve it, and your staff deserves it, please let them know.
Yep, thank you, I appreciate that and I certainly will.
Any other comments, questions? Council, have any new items for the session? If not, this meeting is adjourned at six, one P M.